I'd call a meeting order. We can stand in flood allegiance.
Flood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to recess the meeting and we'll do the budget here.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, Larry, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
You want to pass on the minutes?
Oh.
I think it's on the next page. Yep.
Is that the same with the reading of the annual meeting notice?
Yeah. Want to do that first?
Okay.
If you don't mind.
No, I probably will. So, all right. Let me get myself... Obviously, you can see I'm going to fumble through some of this tonight. Budget hearing notice, okay. Need a motion to dispense with the reading of the meeting notes?
Move it.
Second.
Author.
Aye.
All right. Now, we'll try this.
Yes, sir.
I'll turn that over to you.
Happy to.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you and welcome to everyone either in the gallery or out there in TV land. We...I'm going to make a couple of quick announcements that pertain to the budget and remind folks about different things. And then just going to turn everything over to our business officers, Meg Hungerford and Tim McGuire, who will be presenting most of what we have budget-wise. And folks, if you have any questions or anything, we can go through that. But I just want to remind everyone that voting day for the budget and the other propositions is May 21st, 2019. Voting starts at noon and goes until nine o'clock in the evening and will be at the school bus garage. Individuals who are voting may be asked to show an ID, so you might want to bring an ID with you. If you cannot be present to vote in person, there are absentee ballot applications available, and you can get one of those by contacting the district clerk, who is Corey Frainer over here to my left. Applications for absentee ballots must be in...must be received seven days before the vote if they're going to be mailed, or they can also be received one day before the vote if you plan on delivering them in person. Just want to also remind everybody that in terms of qualification of voters, you need to be 18 years of age or older, need to be a citizen of the United States, and you need to be a resident of the Walton School District for 30 days or more prior to the vote. We've got also board elections. We have three seats up for election. These are a three-year term. The term would last from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2022. And the four names that will be on...that will appear on the ballot that are running for the three seats, but the four names are Miranda McDonald, Kevin Charles, Marilyn Lewis, and Dottie Howe. That is just about the extent of my announcements because the important people are here to talk about budget. So, Tim and Meg.
Hold here. So, because I don't like standing with backs to people, we decided we'd stand alone here, so now I'm just going to shout the information across the way. All right, so let's see if this works because during practice, it didn't work all that well. Right? No, I'm telling you, Rem, it didn't work that well. All right, so we're going to go over our budget. I'm Tim McGuire. This is Meg Hungerford. For those who don't necessarily know this, this will...I'm finishing up in the end of June, and Meg is taking over, and I want credit that I haven't scared her off just yet. She's stayed for the whole two weeks so far, so this is good news. And Meg and I are going to kind of go through the budget, and then we'll take some questions from you, okay?
We're going to start with just a very high-level overview of the proposed 2019-2020 budget. The estimated expenses or appropriations for the budget are $21,745,814. This represents a 4.22% increase over the current year's, the 18-19 budget. The tax levy is proposed at $6,678,723, which is a 2% increase in the tax levy. This is well under the cap requirements under the New York State tax cap. The school districts could have increased the levy about 3.4% or another $98,000, but the school board decided that they wanted to stay below that and are proposing a 2% increase. For perspective, the 2018-2019 levy is listed here. That was $6,547,767.
Thank you. So, next slide, this is our kind of an overview of the summary of the expenditures. We're going to talk about the expenditures related to the object code. So, we've talked in personal services, equipment, capital outlay, contractual debt, so principal and interest and employee benefits. We're going to talk about those in a little more detail, so we're going to kind of move past this. You'll notice that as it seems to be standard, personal services and employee benefits have the areas where there are the largest increases this year as in years past. On the salary side, remember not to touch it because if you touch it, it actually changes. So, I'm going to point without trying to. On the teachings line item here where we have 13 for 7 through 12, the rather large increase is really related to a shift and a re-categorization of employee that was in the 15 code in last year's budget and has been moved up into the 13 code. So, other than that, it's pretty much the same 3% increase that was budgeted for the previous year. Down on the instructional line item, that's also the same line item where the new superintendent salary is listed along with the previous superintendent salary and...well, salary, but the settlement agreement dollar amount is listed in that line item as well. Okay? Some of the other changes that were in that line item is most of the administrators that we have had in the past and we budgeted for have been on the season side, as it were, had some experience. So, the expectation is it'll probably be filled those positions with some that don't have quite as much experience. So, there's some savings there. In addition, we budgeted last year for a CSE chair and a middle school principal, and at this point in time, Mr. Hoover is filling both seats along with some assistance from one of the faculty members who's receiving the site then for doing that. But there's some savings there as well. Down on the non-instructional...non-instructional line item increased because of...well, so my position is on the contractual line items. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But so the shift from taking my dollar amount out of contractual and moving it into salary to cover Meg is what accounts for some of that. The other part of that is that we have...now have our building and ground staff up to full staff as well. So, that's where the other part of that comes from. Equipment, pretty much held equipment lines the same. The equipment for us most of the time is waiting and seeing what happens towards the end of the year, hoping things don't break too awful much and we can purchase some equipment. But usually, it's...we wait until around now and then figure out if there are things that have not broken and we haven't had to replace, you know, what types of things do we need to use to improve. Like I said, talked about the contractual line item. The big movers on the contractual, you'll see that it went down, but I'm going to talk about some of the shifts that were there, and some of the shifts are relatively large. There again, it was my...there was a decrease on the contractual line item for my particular salary. In addition, there was using...or there's been a decrease in the amount of students that utilized the Fast Forward program through Broome. So, those costs have been...have gone down. But there's also been increases in our utilities, which I think most everybody recognizes it happens on a regular basis. So, there's an increase on the utilities, and of course, we've added the new bus lease in. We are in the fourth year of our program for the bus leases. We'll have one more year where there'll be an increase, and then at that point, that line item will be stable. And so, as one falls off, we'll add the next, but the overall budget impact will just be consistent, so there won't be any changes to that. Okay? What else? The...as you can see on the other supplies and materials, getting closer to what we've actually been using, so there's a slight decrease in there. The library materials and software and textbooks, those are the items that we get reimbursed dollar-for-dollar back from the state for those, and it's based on the number of students we have, and a formula state has dollars per pupil. So, those are just those dollar amounts there. Tuition went down last year, I think. We talked and I went over the fact that we hadn't been budgeting for those things, so it was actually quite a large increase. It was, you know, a $335,000 increase, and it was budgeted at 340 last year. We haven't had the same level of students or same number of students going out, so we were able to decrease that a little bit from where we were. So, that's reflected what's on that line. BOSI Services. Some of the biggest movers on the BOSI's line item are printing services. We haven't printed more necessarily, but this is more reflective of what we've actually historically been doing. So, we've increased that line item to reflect what we have done on the printing side. Also, we've had...it's not a year-over-change in terms of occupational education. There's a...they use a three-year average formula, and so for Walton, the increase has gone up. So, we're at $44,000 increase year-over-year for our occupational education. So, we've had over the last several years, a substantial number of students who have enrolled in the BOSI's ACED programs. So, that's what's reflected there. The others, special ed services. I know people in my business always blame special ed for increases, but in this particular case, we've had an increase in the number of students attending those classrooms, which is probably why I don't have as many on the tuition line item because they've just swapped places. So, that's that. Debt principal or debt and interest, it's just off of the schedule that we have, nothing too surprising there. There's been a shift between principal and interest, and there's a slight decrease, but nothing substantial on the debt side of things. Employee benefits. Everything else is pretty stable. We were, you know, over the last several years, we haven't had much on the unemployment line in terms of expenses, so we were able to reduce that line item. The biggest mover and conversation piece has been our health insurance changes, moving away from New York 44 and moving into Exelis. So, there's been an increase, you know, substantial increase, but not nearly as substantial as it would have been had we intended to stay with New York 44 over the entire next year. So, now we have a plan in place where we're going to switch to a different plan and have some dual coverage during the months of June and July to cover run-out costs. Run-out costs would be those expenses that haven't been billed to the insurance company yet, but that we would be responsible for. So, part of the agreement to get out of New York 44 would be that we would have to pay for those costs. So, the plan is to have double coverage so that we can make sure that we don't have to pay dollar-for-dollar for those expenses. So, that's the plan with that. And for those that don't know, the reason that we looked for the shift was that New York 44's rates went up 20% from what had been this year to what's projected for next year. So, that $3.9 million, that's a substantial increase. So, we were able to work some things out for that. Let's...on the revenue side, the tax levy star simply represents the 2% increase that Meg had referenced. The local revenue, we've seen some changes in some of the line items. We haven't been receiving as much, so that's reflected in the decrease there. The state aid, state aid this year was a nice increase for us, so that's reflected...that's reflective of the legislative budget that was enacted sometime not that long ago. Appropriated fund balance, kept it stable for this year, and no other appropriated reserves are being used for the budget for this year. All right? And so, as we, you know, go back to the beginning and show you that we have a 4.2% budget and a 2% levy, projected levy increase, and we are going to talk about the capital reserve proposition that's out there as well. But first, anybody has any questions on what we've already talked about or what was in the information that's been provided? Anything? See, so this means one of two things. Either I did a really good job of explaining or I've already put most of them to sleep. I just told Kevin earlier that he needed to worry because he'd all be asleep by the time I got done any.
Can I just say, we appreciate this?
Sure.
And that's probably why there are enough questions, is that the booklet is very, you know, transparent, and anyone who's looked through it or looked online before they came probably had their questions answered already.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. All right, so now, Meg wants you to take the lead on the capital...yeah, capital reserve.
So, separate from the vote on the budget, there will also be a vote on the establishment of a capital reserve. We just put together a few frequently asked questions related to capital reserves to help answer some questions. A capital reserve fund, what is it? It's a fund that allows the district to set aside money for future projects or equipment, much like you would in a savings account. The fund cannot be established without voter approval, and also keep in mind that any funds cannot be expended from the reserve without voter approval at that time as well. The district doesn't have a specific capital project planned at this point. As the district begins to prepare that plan in the future, this is a mechanism to start saving to help fund that. One of the other questions that we tried to answer was where will the money come from? Once the reserve is authorized, the Board of Education can direct monies to be put into that reserve. It can be funded from prior year surpluses, aid, or maybe grants that are received toward a building project. Also, interest that's earned on those funds can stay in the fund. The proposition that is being voted on has a maximum of $8 million that can be put into the fund over time. So, that's not a balance, that's deposits into the fund. Will taxes go up due to the establishment of the reserve fund? No, taxes would not increase based on establishing it. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking for sources like prior year surpluses and aid and grants to help begin to fund that. And then another question we wanted to answer is why should we do this now? You can't establish a capital reserve fund at the same time that you're ready to do your project. You need to begin planning and be able to build up that reserve. The goal is to build up some funds that will help fund the project and decrease the amount that has to be borrowed later on, but still attempting to maximize any state or other aid that can be used toward the project.
So, again, I think as Meg has explained, the most important part of this is it's just setting up the opportunity for the district to set aside some funds for future use that allows us to not necessarily go directly to the taxpayers for that potential increase to do that project, to cover the taxpayers' portion of that or at least a portion of that. The other important piece that needs...that I know Meg mentioned, but it's really important is that the $8 million is the sum total that can be deposited in there. This is not a, I can put $5 million in there, you know, take a million dollars out, now I can put four more in there. The grand total of what can be deposited in there cannot be greater than the $8 million cap. If you use some of it, you still can't put more in to go beyond the $8 million of deposits. So, that's also an important piece that it's not, you know, a blank check, more or less. It can't be deposited higher than the $8 million.
And I also think it's important to reiterate that no funds will be put in without board approval, and no funds can be taken out without voter approval.
Correct. Anybody have any questions on that? Knocking it out of the park today. One more thing though, just to remind that this is our budget newsletter and budget notice that'll be mailed out tomorrow. So, look for that in your mail. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody here's going to have a motion and a return to meeting? Is there public comment or questions? Half of them left. Okay. Okay, now we can have a...
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay. Approval of minutes? Can you get a...anybody have any question on minutes? If not, can I get an approval for the April 23rd, 24th, and 25th?
Second.
All three at once?
Yep.
And that was under you.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was there any questions on CSE or the CPSE on recommendations? If not, no...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This should take us to discussion items, right? Okay. So, we have the webinar coming up on...the Mr. Webinar on May 15th. That's at 5:00 or 5:30?
Five o'clock.
Five.
Okay. With Tim Kramer. And if any of you just have your evaluation from the board meeting that you haven't turned back in, please do so.
Do I do one on tonight's meeting, Corey, because I wasn't here for that one?
You can.
Okay.
Anybody have any other discussion items? No. Moving on to correspondence. We don't have any of them, right?
No, at this time, no.
Okay, so I believe we're down to additions to the agenda.
We do have one addition to the agenda. We will be proposing a resolution for the board to authorize that the Walton School District withdraws from New York 44 health insurance plan effective July 31st, 2019. And that will be a new business item. Eight F, I believe.
Okay. The...move again. Consent agenda, yep. Does anybody have questions on consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, new business. Donations. There was a...we had a correction basically just of the April, right? One of the donations.
Right. I had listed a couple of the donations incorrectly. I listed two of them instead of merging them.
And then we have a new donation this year, right? Where this one, the...
There's a list of new donations.
Yep. 500 from Brian Solon, the Walton Central School class of 1979, graduation scholarship, right?
I think that's the correction.
That was the correction.
Mm-hmm.
So, $200 from Jeff Field, is that to the Walton class of 1979, graduation scholarship? $300 from Alliance International Walton Club to the Forensic Speech and Debate Club. $100 from Rita Lee to the Forensic Speech and Debate Club. $50 from As You Wish Design and Gift to the Forensic Speech and Debate Club. $50 from Frank and Penny Tweedy to the Matthew Tweedy Scholarship. $50 from Louise Craig to the Walton FFA for the Justin Craig Memorial Fund. Have a motion to accept the donations?
Motion.
Second.
About the correction, too.
And the correction as well.
Yes. Thank you. Any opposed? All right. See personnel appointments. I have a motion to accept.
I'll make it.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. All right. Excuse me?
I'm good.
Okay. Then, do you write daytime place of regular monthly meetings?
I just had a question on that.
Yes.
Were we going to go 6 o'clock with all of them, and there's still a 5:30 on the BOSI's administrative budget vote for April 20th?
I thought that when we decided it was a special meeting, we'd do 5:30. If you want to make that six, you can.
It's up to everybody. I just thought we...
On April 20th?
Yep.
Right, that's a five-minute meeting.
Oh, okay.
That's up to you.
That's fine. Leave it the way it is, and that's fine.
So, we used to do that in the afternoon, right? Then it becomes difficult to do.
Right. Not everybody can be here in the afternoon.
Exactly. Okay. Any other questions? Have a...
I'll move it.
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And this is the new item, authorizing the...
It's the... The flood mitigation?
Right.
Yes, that's the one.
Right.
Oh, okay. Well, this is the...we need a motion to authorize the school's fundamental mitigation grant.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
I think Greg's done a lot of work on this. I think he should be able to speak on this.
Resolution to allow the school district to...authorizing the school district to pursue funding through the Catskill Watershed Corporation to assist with a flood mitigation project for dry floodproofing the Cave One and Two wings at Townsend. This just authorizes basically the school to seek funding through a grant through CWC for the design of that project, and then that may potentially open us up to being able to apply for them directly for the cost of construction as well, but one step at a time. So, this would be the recommendation to do that.
I'll make a motion.
Just going to add second that motion.
Yes.
Marilyn.
So Esther Salvia picked mechanical and I said, well, you better get that one right because her dad's. She got it right, I didn't miss a word. Tomorrow night is the Townsend Recital, that's where kids play piano and guitar and trumpet and do things like that. We have the Townsend Art Show is going to be the 15th through the 17th with the PTA Book Fair and we have a carnival. Our Townsend Concert is the 16th, the evening of the 16th. 17th, we have Ag Day, we're going to look at the weather and see what we do with that. Hopefully it won't rain. And we have one more assessment, the fourth grade science and a field test. So a lot of stuff going on May into June, it's a busy time. That's what I have.
Anything?
Nothing additional.
Okay.
We just, I guess it was last week, the week before, finished up the state testing, we still have the eighth grade science test, end of, end of May, beginning of June. The 22nd is our middle school spring concert.
Anything else other than that?
Mr. Hoover and I have been actively working at trying to find personnel and we recently found another special ed teacher. And today, we think we were successful finding a replacement agricultural teacher. So that, and I'm starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel on staff evaluation, so I'm all set to handle paranoia for graduation.
Well, I'm, I'm ready for the paranoia after graduation. Although the work that has to be done in the summer, so there's a lot of preparation for the admin retreat, but also for teacher professional development. We've got six days coming up of really targeted and focused professional development for teachers. It's quite exciting, but it involves lots of organization. I've got a couple of teachers who are going off to a conference in a couple of weeks' time and they're going to be trained in using coding, makey makey. And part of that is they get an actual makey makey kid, which comes back to the middle school, so we're really looking forward to that. And the teachers are excited to do that because then the teachers that go will turnkey the training and hopefully they'll have you fit them there. So we'll start our kids off in the middle school with coding. Apart from that, and we're just doing all the stuff kind of after that they, they do the state test, we get to do all the scoring and the paperwork that comes with it. So we're at that stage at the moment with the scoring and getting that off to the RIC and off to the state. And then, then we can start on science.
Megan, anything more?
We shared much of what we've been working on and next it'll be digging into the next three weeks, trying to get everybody's health insurance changed over, so I'm sure.
Yes, yes, the dash to the end of the year now, it always feels that way to me anyway. So I won't belabor the, the insurance issue, we got that taken care of it looks like and we're on our, on the road to continue to get our paperwork done and that sort of thing. So that's a, that's a great thing. Yesterday, we had a hole in place and we had a K9 unit here at the, at this campus. Didn't find anything, I'm glad to say. The dog was pretty tired at the end of the time, but everything went just the way we actually had hoped that it would go. Yesterday, I met with Paul Summer, the, he's the CEO at the Delaware Valley Hospital and UHS. We talked about renewing our contract with them in, in the coming year. Spent about 45 minutes having a nice conversation with him. Also yesterday, I had the pleasure of going to Austin Lincoln Park and officially throwing out the first baseball of the Little League season. And I understand notably, I actually made it to the plate, so.
It's a good thing.
But that was, that was, that was a lot of fun. I was, it was really nice to be there. And everybody was very gracious and very, very friendly. It was, it was a good time. Today, we had our community group, we have one more meeting, we have, we meet monthly. We have one more meeting in June, but one of the topics that came up that I'd like the board to think about, we don't have to talk about it right now, but to think about is that there's going to be some conversation with regard to the community landfill, we're the host community for the community landfill. And there's some conversation going on about revisiting the contract that was done many, many years back. And the, the school district is named as one of the principal groups that benefit from that. And so we've been asked about representation and certainly I can be there, but I'm also wondering whether or not we should have someone else there also. So I'd just like you to think about that and we'll have, we'll have a conversation maybe at the next meeting. There's nothing coming up immediately on it, but it will come up, so. Tomorrow night, we get to, a couple of us get to travel, are you traveling with? Yeah, you're going too, yeah. So Mark and I and, and Olivia Harvey and Stephanie Rosa are all going over to the annual scholarship recognition dinner, which is at Sunionia, it's done every year. It's a nice event. You've got some photos out here along the hallway that, that are from past events. It's a good time, it's a wonderful time to really honor the students who, those students, one student from each school district who has worked so very hard to be where they are academically, so. And then next week, I'm meeting with Cornell representatives from Cornell Cooperative Extension. Wanted to, we want to pick their brain about some things that we might do with our Ag program for the coming year. We've got a new person coming on, we've got some changes that we know that are, are coming and we thought that it would be a good idea to perhaps meet with some of those folks and they might have some tips for us. So that'll be up for next year, next week or next year. So, yeah, the dash to the end of the year is going on and we're, I'm starting to make my nice long list of things that we need to take care of during the summer, some of the things that Jane already alluded to, but there are, there are a number of other ones that mention some things to add them and to, and to art about some things to be done for, to organize things for the coming year. And very excited about all of that, all of that time and everything, so. Last thing is I would request a brief executive session to talk about matters of employment for a particular person. And that's it for me and us. Motion to.
I'll move it.
Second.
I can.
Okay.
All there?
Aye.
No. So.